AP Capstone Scholar Athlete and the Member of the National Honor Society at Elizabeth High School, Frank J. Sicarelle Academy. Emily currently serves as the President of the Student Government and the Captain of the District Speech and Debate Team. In addition to these rigorous extracurricular activities, she plays varsity soccer and conducts Bible study with children at her church. It is my pleasure to introduce Emily Herrera. Please, if you could, come up. Madam President.
Mr. Kennedy, can you please add our student representative to the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the microphones are open to the public comments to those who have signed in prior to this session. Each statement made by a person shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. Each speaker, thank you, shall comply in all respects with Board Policy 9322. The policy or the following rules shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attack on individuals or naming of individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Comments will not be debated. Any person in violation of this policy will be warned. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board and public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call Ms. Christina Marrera.
Good evening, everyone. Recently, this board and the superintendent posted about dyslexia awareness. While it is commendable to raise awareness, a social media post does little when there is no real action to support it. Dyslexia affects twenty percent of the population and represents eighty to ninety percent of all individuals with learning disabilities. It is the most common of all neurocognitive disorders. Yet, in this district, where is the accountability for the students impacted by it? A post is hollow if it isn't backed by meaningful policy and practices. If parents who request dyslexia screening and are denied, or worse, lied to, like I was, then what is the point? I was told that my child in second grade was too young to be screened for dyslexia, despite him showing clear signs of reading difficulties. Only when I presented the law did I get action. That's what you should have been posting. The law that requires school districts to screen for dyslexia by the end of the first semester of the second grade if indicators are present. If the screening shows the child may have dyslexia or another reading disability, a comprehensive assessment must follow. Why aren't we informing parents of their rights and the district's obligations when we make Facebook posts? Why are we hiding behind falsehoods and unnecessary barriers? This lack of transparency does more harm than good. Additionally, this is exactly why we need a functioning, truly inclusive Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. I'm glad you're paying attention, Madam Superintendent. And it cannot be an exclusive club of parents who receive a selected email. It is not enough to say that we are empowering parents through a training on October twenty-third if that opportunity is not accessible and communicated to all parents. The vital information belongs in the hands of every parent, not just a select few. You have a responsibility to ensure that every parent, every family, every child in this district receives the education and the support that they are entitled to. Awareness is the first step, but action is what truly makes the difference. Let's start by being honest, open, and accountable to all families we serve.
Thank you, Ms. Marrera. At this time, I call Mr. Kason Little.
Good evening. I want to come again just before you to address the uniform issues again. Number one, you have dozens of students still being turned away from their respective high schools on a daily basis. Madam Superintendent, you have failed to address that in a meaningful, meaningful way. Again, students should not be turned away from their respective schools because they do not color in their white soles and their shoes. I mean, I thought that we learned from seeing it on the news and seeing it in other districts where students who are denied entry and stuff happens to them. They're in your custody the minute that they touch or place their feet on school premises, period. And we're still turning them away. And we're what, six weeks in school already, four weeks in, five weeks in? And we still don't get it? This is horrible. And we all know, lo and behold, majority of the schools that's occurring to, occurring at, hawsey, the wire, the district labeled dumping ground schools that's in your eyes. Why is that? Every year, the same thing happens. I don't know where you get your data from, okay, that students are able to, you know, proceed with entry, like there's nothing in the way? No, what's in the way is their look being told that they have to color in their shoes in order for them to be able to be permissible in the building. You need to really look at that. Either you know what's going on, or you're being told lies, or you truly just know what's going on and that's not a concern of yours. And it needs to be because it's disgusting. Every day, parents are calling their building principals and they're saying, well, it's district policy. Horrible. And in that same token, students are also being told and encouraged every year to drop out. Over and over again. If you don't want to be here, drop out. And that's not an issue to you. You're still not under mandate to try and remedy that. That happens every single year and you all are aware of it. That has been brought to your attention a number of times. Our black students are worthy. You say that during Black History Month, but we need it in action. We need a remedy in place that's going to value them and keep them safe.
Thank you. At this time, I call Ms. Michelle Santos.
Good evening. Last year, my daughter attended School 14 and her LLD teacher, Ms. Roldan, did something extraordinary. Every morning, she took it upon herself to incorporate yoga into the kid's routine. As a parent of a special needs child, I was thrilled to see this. My daughter absolutely loved doing yoga and it made a noticeable difference in her well-being. But this is just not about my daughter. This is about the benefits yoga can bring to all students, particularly those with special needs. For those unfamiliar, let me outline the benefits. Yoga can help children feel less stressed and anxious, improve emotional regulation, boost concentration and focus, aid in self-control and behavior, and even enhance their academic performance. These aren't just theories, they are proven facts. A study on children with autism from ages eight to fourteen demonstrated that the majority of kids involved showing improved symptoms such as better tolerance for sitting, increased socialization, and greater adaptability in adult promactivity. So why are we not doing this across the district? Today, I stand here before you to suggest something simple but impactful. A district-wide Saturday yoga program specifically for our special needs students. I see program after program designed for neurotypical children running from October to May. Yet, for special needs kids, we just have five weeks of basketball in the fall and five weeks of soccer in the spring. Does that seem fair to you? Are they not deserving of the same consistent opportunities? We do have the special needs swim program which runs from October to May, and I want to thank Mr. Candelino and Mr. Marty for the dedication to that. But why stop there? Our special needs children deserve more than a few weeks of sports scattered throughout the year. They deserve year-round opportunities just like every other student in this district. This isn't just a matter of adding another activity. This is about equality and about giving every child the chance to thrive, to grow, and to feel supported. So I'm calling on the Special Services Department to let's make this happen. Let's show that we value all our students and let's give them the opportunities they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And lastly, I call Ms. Maria Lorenz.
Good evening. Yesterday, I went to a block watch meeting and I got the chance to talk to a sergeant that was there present. And I asked him about the vaping policy for the school district and if it was mandatory that we have police officers waste their time and their resource coming to the school and what was the process? And they said, well, we basically tag it and destroy it. So I asked them, that seems kind of productive and redundant. Why wouldn't the school use their own security and staff to tag and destroy vape pens instead of calling police officers that are called because either somebody's getting robbed or mugged or assaulted or stabbed? And they said, because you don't have enough resources. Well, that leads me to my next point, which is a point of contention with the propaganda going around about no increases on our properties. I want to know who is paying for that free lunch? Because it's been over six years, you keep saying, there's no tax increase. In reality, we should call a spade a spade. You should be transparent and be honest with the community and tell them that the reason you're not increasing the taxes is because you are not demanding that the city pay you the fair share that they should be giving you. So for six years, the only people that have not benefited has been our kids. Because you're cutting services, you're cutting after-school programs. And there's so many things that are being cut. But you want to sit here and tout a no zero property taxes. It's a lie. There is no free lunch. You know that, I know that. If you went to college and you studied economics, you would most definitely know this, both macro and micro. And if you don't, then you should take a 101 class and learn how that works. There is no free lunch. In addition, you say you have more schools. You don't have more schools. You're tearing down schools that had asbestos that you failed to tell the public they had asbestos and you're acquiring more buildings. Stop with the fakes. Stop with the lies because that's what they are. And more teachers. Do you know how many teachers we lost? Do you know what it takes to replace teachers? What is your plan for that? Newark is definitely benefiting from all the great teachers that have been here and left. That is a district that's benefiting, not us. I highly suggest that in your propagandas going forward, you honestly tell the public what it is that you're doing instead of thinking that we're stupid and uneducated and we can't figure it out. Because I actually hold a double masters, I can figure it out. And so can the average person that's here that has gone to school.
Thank you. At this time, I close the public comment portion of the meeting. As Board President, my continued vision is to promote community engagement and to unite board members as a team. As I had mentioned in January opening remarks, as Board President, each board member was asked to contribute and sponsor a specific initiative each month throughout the year. During the month of October, Isaiah Rivera chose to sponsor Hispanic Heritage Month to highlight the rich diversity of Elizabeth Public Schools and the outstanding work being done in our schools to ensure all students learn and achieve at high levels regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, neighborhood, household income, or home language. In the highlight video, we'll experience Hispanic Heritage Month as a time for us to celebrate the rich contributions of Hispanic Americans to our country's health and culture. It is also a time to learn more about the diverse cultures and traditions of Hispanic communities in Elizabeth. And again, the full video will be available at the end of the month. At this time, I would like for us to play our video highlight.
Buenas, soy Isaiah Rivera, and I am honored to serve the Elizabeth community as a-
Can you start the video over, please? Thank you.
Buenas, soy Isaiah Rivera, and I am honored to serve the Elizabeth community as a board member of Elizabeth Board of Education. As our board, under Madam President Charlene Bathelis, we have launched a number of initiatives during 2024 that has enhanced learning for all of our students in the Elizabeth Public Schools. For the month of October, I've chosen diversity and inclusion. And what a better way to sponsor that than through Hispanic Heritage Month and highlight the rich diversity of Elizabeth Public Schools and the outstanding work being done in our schools to ensure that all students learn and achieve at high levels regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, neighborhood, household income, or home language. Our diversity and unique experiences are incredible assets that contribute to the growth and success of our community. Our bilingual and ESL department does a tremendous job of offering programs that help our multilingual learners develop and thrive as they look to pursue their life stream. When my parents and I moved to the United States from Ecuador, I was enrolled as an ESL student. Here in Elizabeth, I know by personal experience how our programs provide rigorous education in both native languages and English. As a board member, I will continue to seek ways to celebrate and share the unique cultures of all of our students, all of our team members, and all of our families with one another so that every community member feels a sense of belonging and value.
Thank you. I just want to thank our board member Isaiah Rivera again for, one, the exciting board meeting that we had last time with the dancers and also just going throughout the district and talking to the bilingual department. So we just wanted to thank everyone in our district who celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month. And if the board member, if you would like to speak, you can say that.
Sure, I think it's very important that we understand diversity and inclusion. So I really felt that that was a special topic for this month, especially with Hispanic heritage and to really understand the cultures and the values that we have, the diversity we have, not only in the school district, but also in our town. So thank you, Charlene, for allowing me.
Absolutely. At this time, I'm going to have our Superintendent of Schools present the community updates.
Thank you again, Madam President. We're going to begin with the community updates. We're going to begin with the community updates, please. Thank you. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, we're in the season which flu and RSV are on the rise. On our website, we've provided resources to the community on our district webpage specifically that offers information about identifying symptoms of the flu and RSV and the steps that you can take in order to protect yourself from these illnesses and actions that you can take in order to, more importantly, prevent the spread of these illnesses to others. You can find these resources by going onto our website and clicking on the flu and RSV resources icon at the top of the page and visit the resources page that it will take you to. Next slide, please. Also, important reminder for all of our families, we'll be administering the PSAT for grades ten and eleven and the SAT for grade twelve on Wednesday, October twenty-third. Our guidance counselors will be sending information together with our principals to all of the students with reminders leading up to October twenty-third. Next slide, please. And next, we'd like to share with our community our after-school and Saturday programs that we're offering this year, beginning with our elementary programs. Next slide, please. Our Academic English Language Arts and Mathematics After-School Program that'll be available at all of our K-8 schools. Students, this program will focus on English Language Arts and our mathematics standards and students will learn through an adaptive, personalized experience utilizing one of our software program, Success Maker. We have the program that's going to begin on, actually started this week on October fifteen, and it's going to run through May first. And this includes a component where our teachers assist students with homework and then the remainder of the program is to focus on those critical skills that we need to help our children with. The program's for one hour after school from three to four o'clock. And the next slide, please, our Point of Entry After-School Program. This program is specifically designed for our new entrants at the elementary level, available at all of our K-8 schools, and our students will be provided instruction in English Language Arts, Maths, Science, and Social Studies through very engaging activities. Also, we have a social-emotional component and activities that are provided by our district bilingual psychologist. This program also started this week and it runs through May first on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Next slide, please. And as mentioned, the social-emotional learning component of the ESL Point of Entry Program. It allows for social-emotional learning activities and sessions with our students that are already participating in the ESL Point of Entry Program. Program started this past week, as I stated previously, and will run through June sixth, and that's Monday, Thursdays, and Saturdays for one hour after school at all of our K-8 schools. And next, we have our social-emotional learning after-school program at all of our K-8 schools, and that program is designed to address students' essential life skills. Our counselors and our social workers have reached out to the families, and this is an effort to be able to strengthen those critical skills, correct, such as developing empathy, strengthening students' interpersonal skills. Also, there's an arts and crafts component, team-building exercises, and mindful practices. This program will start on October twenty-second and run through May twenty-second on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at the elementary level at all schools from three to four o'clock and at the high school from two-thirty to three-thirty. And next, we have our Arts Enrichment After-School Program that will provide our students that integration of the arts and literature and technology at the elementary and middle school levels in all of our K-8 schools. That program will begin October twenty-first and run through May sixteenth, and that is on Mondays and Thursdays for one hour after school. Next slide, please. And next, we have our Fall Saturday Youth Athletic Program. Our athletic program's been a success. It's for our students in grades one through eight and opportunity to be able to engage in various activities and learn the fundamentals of various sports. That program starts October nineteenth through December fourteenth on Saturday. And as you can see on the slide before you, we have the different time slots based on the grade levels that the children are in and the locations are throughout our district. Next slide. And now we go into our elementary and high school programs, beginning with our Special Education Support After-School Program, and that is for our students in kindergarten through high school. That provides homework support, also has an important component of tutoring to assist our students in meeting expectations. It's a voluntary program, and we are ready to roll this program out on Tuesday, October twenty-second, and will run through May twenty-ninth. That will be on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And as you can see on the slide, the different time slots, whether your child attends a K-8 school or the high school, one hour after school. Next is the Arts Enrichment Saturday Program, and that program will begin on October twenty-six and run through May seventeenth on Saturday, and it's open district-wide to our middle school and high school students. And fantastic program, the tremendous level of creativity that our students exhibit, the fine arts and music are woven in into our creative literature. Next slide, please, and then for our high school programs, next slide. We have our Lunchtime and After-School Tutoring Program that's available at all of our high school academies, and that is to support our students in English Language Arts and Maths, Science, and Social Study skills. That program already started on September sixth and it runs through June nineteenth, and it's Monday through Friday, one hour after school, and also available during the students' lunchtime. Next slide, please. And then we have our After-School Tutoring Program through Princeton Review, and there's a variety of tutoring services for our high school students. There is one-on-one tutoring in various subjects that includes Maths, Science, English, and test preparation. And as you can see from the slide before you, there's live tutoring, there's on-demand help with twenty-four-seven access for homework support and study support. There's subject-specific resources as well, and the test prep, as previously mentioned, in order to support students in the administration of the SAT and ACT. This program started this week on October fifteenth and will run through June first, and it's Monday through Friday at all of our academies. Next slide, please. Next, we have our Bilingual Achievement After-School Program, and this program is specifically designed to assist our multilingual learners, specifically with language acquisition. And this program already started this week on October fifteenth and is running through May thirtieth, and it's Monday through Thursday from two-thirty to four-thirty at all of our high school academies. Next slide, please. Next, we have our Best of Both Worlds After-School Program, and this program also assists our new entrant multilingual students in addressing their English language proficiency, and it also assists with those critical literacy and math skills as well. That program also launched this week on October fifteenth and is running through May thirtieth on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for one hour after school, and this is a centralized high school program. Next slide, please. And then we have our CTE After-School Tutoring Program, and this provides academic support and enrichment to support all the various strands available in our CTE program. And it also assists with the necessary seat hours for industry-valued credentialing requirements. Program started in September and is going to run through May, Monday through Friday, and it's from two-thirty to four-thirty, available at all of our high school academies. And then followed by, the next slide, our CTE Saturday Program. And this also provides support academically as well as career counseling and mentoring to our students. We have various sessions, as you can see from the slide before you, that run from the months of October through December, and the second session from February to April on Saturdays and the specific time slots, whether your child is in middle school or in high school, and this program takes place at our high school academies. And next slide, please, our Apex Saturday Program. And we utilize the Apex Program for our blended and virtual learning supports. It's a digital curriculum that helps our students specifically in mathematics and science and English, social studies, world language, electives, and as well as advanced placement. And we have that program that started on September twenty-first and it runs through May twenty-fourth on Saturdays from nine AM to one PM at our high school academies. Next, of course, we have our High School After-School Clubs with a variety of interests that are covered throughout all of our high schools, and we have a master listing available for our families and our students who may not have yet selected a club to participate in. And that completes the After-School and Saturday Programs as we move into Inside EPS. Next slide, please. And the next one, please. And we're going to now start with our next slide. I wanted to be able to announce that fourteen of our schools received the Safe Routes to School Gold Award. This designation is from the New Jersey Safe Routes to Schools in 2024 as part of the organization's recognition program. This is an opportunity to be able to encourage safer, more accessible walking and bicycling environments for our children. There's an educational component, there's a training component as well as research. So have to be able to cite the schools. School number four, school six, school seven, school eight, school nine, school nineteen, school twenty-one, school twenty-two, school twenty-six, school twenty-seven, school twenty-nine, school thirty, and our Early Childhood Center that we are in this evening, school fifty-one, along with our Edison Academy were the gold award recipients. School numbers one and thirteen received the bronze award, and school numbers five and fourteen, as well as Hamilton Academy, received the First Steps Award. So wonderful work that is taking place at our schools, and we congratulate them. Next slide. I wonder how the soccer game is going, Mr. Kennedy? Don't have a score yet? Okay. Elizabeth High School Boys Soccer Coach Jack Gonzalez earned his hundredth career win with a four-to-one victory by number eighteen-minute men over Cranford at Williams Field in Elizabeth on September thirtieth. Coach Gonzalez reached the hundredth win mark in only six-plus seasons, including the shortened 2020 season during the pandemic, and his teams have lost more than four games in a season, only once. And we celebrate Coach Gonzalez. He is an incredible vice principal at Hamilton Academy and a tremendous coach, leading our boys varsity soccer team, and they are playing this evening, so we hope to have an update soon as to their victory. Next slide, please. Elizabeth High School, Frank J. Sicarelle Academy, Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy, and Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy, once again, were among the New Jersey schools to earn a place on the College Board 2024 AP School Honor Roll. And schools are recognized at various levels, at the bronze, at the silver, gold, and platinum tiers for meeting or exceeding specific criteria. It's establishing the college culture, college credit, and college optimization. EHS received the platinum tier, Dwyer and Hamilton received the bronze tier- EHS received the platinum tier, Dwyer and Hamilton received the bronze tier. And both earned their gold status in college culture subcategory. So amazing work taking place in our high school academies. And next slide, as we address the arts. Our Elizabeth High School Marching Band competed this past weekend at MetLife Stadium and is part of the Ludwig Musser Classic US Bands Competition. The marching band scored an eighty-nine point five in their performance and earned first place over Hillsborough High School and South Brunswick High School, who are both known to have great music programs. Elizabeth also won the special award for best color guard, best visual and best visual effects. So congratulations to our Elizabeth High School Marching Band and also to our success in all of these recognitions. And that completes our Inside EPS, our News from Central for this month. I would like to now turn our attention to Mr. Vosler. Ah, Mr. Vosler, please come, come join us. Mr. Vosler, our supervisor of harassment, intimidation and bullying. Will be presenting the HIB Self-Assessment for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And I provided the presentation in advance to our board.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Hugo Meyer, fellow staff and community members. Here tonight to present our Harassment, Intimidation and Bullying Self-Assessment, as this Hugo Meyer just said, from our twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So the state requires that we present this self-assessment in October of each year from the previous school year. So assessing our performance under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Why is it no bully zone important to our school community? First few slides are different activities that we've done last school year at different schools related to our different Week of Respect Unity Walks and different activities each of our schools conducted during the Week of Respect from last school year, building connections. So how is EPS graded in the implementation of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights? The state developed a rubric that aided districts to assess how well we're implementing the law. The rubric consists of eight core elements and twenty-six indicators. Each indicator receives a score of zero to three points. And it's designed to be a growth model to enhance our programs and implementation from an SEL perspective year over year toward out bullying. So our first element consists of five indicators A through E. So basically, each of our schools at the end of each year, sit down with their school safety and climate teams and conduct this self-assessment and grade themselves in each of these areas. So Element One, in order for the schools to meet requirements, which is a score of two, they have to establish, implement and assess HIB programs. And have involved various groups that include school staff, students, administrators, volunteers, parents, law enforcement and community members. And for each school to meet the requirement for these indicators, under this element, each school would have to show that their HIB programs, approaches and initiatives were designed to create school-wide conditions to prevent and address HIB. And that each school's safety team had identified patterns of HIB and reviewed school climate policies and practices. The second core element consists of our training on our board HIB policy. It consists of three indicators A through C. Each school has to have met the requirements. And all employees and students needed to have been provided with training on our district HIB policy that included instruction on preventing bullying based on the protected categories and the distinguishing characteristics. Element Three consists of five indicators A through E. And for our schools to meet requirements for these indicators, all teaching staff members and administrators had to have completed instruction in HIB prevention and suicide prevention that includes information on HIB during their five-year professional development period. And if all haven't been trained, there's a plan to do so. Also, for schools to meet requirements, all the anti-bully specialists had to have permitted release time to receive in-service training to act as the school's anti-bullying specialist. Here in Elizabeth, we meet a minimum of four times per school year where all our counselors and social workers, who are our anti-bully specialists and alternates, are thoroughly trained to act as the ABS. And in addition to meet the requirements for this element, the members of the school's safety and climate team at each school would have received professional development in successful school climate programs and approaches. The fourth element is on our curriculum and instruction on HIB and related information. That consists of two indicators A and B. For our schools to meet requirements here, they have to show evidence of age-appropriate instruction to all students on preventing HIB throughout the school year. And this has to be aligned with our New Jersey learning standards. Also, the schools have to show evidence that they observed the Week of Respect, which is the first week of October each school year. And they had to have featured activities recognizing the importance of character education by providing age-appropriate instruction on HIB prevention. Here in Elizabeth, all our schools implement extensive instruction to our students during the Week of Respect. And it includes various types of classroom lessons, guest speakers, that address the dangers of cyberbullying and the importance of internet safety. And many schools hold different contests to make the week educational and fun. Our fifth element consists of three indicators A through C. It's on our HIB personnel. To meet the requirements here, the law requires that there is evidence that the principal appoints an anti-bully specialist that performs those duties. That they perform the duties and that each school has the name, school, phone number, school address and email address of the anti-bully specialist and the district anti-bully coordinator on their school's website. Also, to meet the requirements, there needs to be evidence that shows that each school's ABS met at least twice during the school year with the anti-bully coordinator. At least twice during the school year to discuss and strengthen procedures to prevent and address HIB. Also, each school's safety teams need to have met at least twice per school year in their schools. Here in Elizabeth, our schools meet a minimum roughly four to five times per year. And that the appropriate staff and a parent are included on that team and that all HIB complaints and school climate issues were discussed. The sixth core element has, is consisted of two indicators A and B. That's on our school-level incident reporting procedures. To meet requirements here, each school has to demonstrate that all responsible school staff implemented all the requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, including anonymous reporting, verbal reports and written reports. The schools would need to have verbally reported any potential acts of HIB, either witnessed or having reliable information regarding a potential act to the building principal and the anti-bully specialist on that same day. The staff would then have to submit a written report on the new required State 338 forms to the principal within two days of that verbal report of being notified of the allegation. There also needs to be a means for parents to confidentially submit the HIB 338 forms for family and caregivers, which is on our district website in our no bully zone area. Also, to meet requirements for this element, if new information were to become available after an investigation has been completed, that the district has a procedure that we can go back and add new information and update any investigation as necessary. Our seventh element consists of four indicators A through D. That's on our HIB Investigation Procedure. In order for our schools to meet requirements here, parents of all the alleged offenders and victims were to have been notified in all investigations and were informed of the availability of counseling or other intervention services when appropriate. The schools must also affirm that all investigations were completed within ten school days and that a written report was conducted for all of these investigations. Also, after the completion of each investigation, in order for our schools to meet the requirements of the law, there needs to be evidence that the results of all the investigations were reported to the superintendent within two school days of completion of each of those investigations. And our final core element, number eight, is two indicators A through B, and that's on our HIB reporting. The final element, in order for our schools to meet requirements under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, they have to demonstrate evidence that the school has a procedure for ensuring that staff members report the required information for all incidences of violence, vandalism and HIB. And that there is a process in place to ensure that all these reports include all that required information. And finally, for the schools to meet the requirements for these indicators, all schools would need to have posted on their school's homepage and on our district homepage, the official HIB grades once they are approved and received from the Department of Education. The state approvals are generally received in June over these past few school years. And then the official grades for the previous school years are posted within two weeks to our district's homepage and to each of our schools' specific individual websites. So once the self-assessments are submitted to the state after this presentation, they are generally approved not until about June of each school year and then they're updated onto our website. So again, the scoring, each of those indicators I just went over. The schools give themselves a zero for not meeting requirements. One would partially meet the requirements. Three, two would be meeting all the requirements, so everyone want to live in the two area. And if you can exceed, that's great, that means you did well above and beyond what the law's requiring. So the highest score any school can receive is a seventy-eight. So there's twenty-six indicators. You can get a three is the highest, so a seventy-eight would be the highest. So it's not based on a hundred, it's based on seventy-eight. So last year, again, a score of fifty-two would be a two in each area, which means we're meeting all the requirements. All of our thirty-seven schools scored a sixty-two or higher last year. And our schools ranged from a sixty-two to a seventy-eight, so this is the first year we had a perfect score at one of our schools. And the average across our thirty-seven schools was a seventy this last school year. And that's up from a sixty-eight average from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So again, the process and the requirements, after the schools complete the assessment, the information is input into the state website, which the schools all did at the beginning of this school year in September. The results are presented to the public, which I'm doing now. The, we obtain the official approval from the Board of Education and with the superintendent's assurances, the self-assessments will then be submitted to the Department of Education within the next week. So going over all of our schools from last school year, their grades. As we see for the first time, School Twenty-Five had a perfect seventy-eight, which means they exceeded the requirement in every indicator that we just went over. And you go from School Seven on down through School Fifty-Two and School Twenty-Two with seventy-threes. Continuing on, Abraham Lincoln, fourteen, had a seventy-two, again, exceeding requirements in many of the indicators. Down through John Marshall, number twenty, with a seventy. Joseph Batten, School Four, also scored a seventy on down through Admiral William L. Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy with a sixty-six. And rounding out, School Twenty-Seven with a sixty-six, down through Robert Morse, eighteen, with a sixty-two. And again, if you have a fifty-two, you're doing what you need to do. Anything above that is you're exceeding the requirements. So our schools range from a sixty-two to a seventy-eight, so we're doing a very good job in that area. And moving on, again, some more pictures, this was from the opening days of school last school year, welcoming back all of our students. Some highlights of our work to date, as we discussed, the Week of Respect is the first week of October every year. That's really where we kick off our SEL initiatives. Our HIB and character education program that we have here in the district last year continuing into this year. Panorama Education is our main SEL platform for student and parent surveys, and our students are all taking surveys this week. And their SEL Playbook Platform, where we get a lot of our character education to train our students and our staff in character education. Character Strong, we had last year continuing with this year. It's another SEL platform and curriculum where students are given lessons either via specific trainings or class one-time lessons versus curriculums on our SEL. We have various schools that are PBSIS schools, Pod is a behavior supports. Harmony Power, Sensei John Marion, we've been contracting with his Harmony Power Group for the last six to seven years. I'll talk about that a little more in a minute. Therapeutic Learning Connections, contracting with Connie Palmer, who does student, staff and parent workshops at all of our schools throughout the whole year on various SEL topics. We have Relationship Violence Training, she also does Relationship Violence Training. Our Bully-Busting Curriculum is a state program that teaches our students the difference between bullying and teasing and the importance of respect and kindness. And our Bound for Greatness Program, which is an initiative, we are on our second year on, and that's in ten of our schools throughout the district. Some more highlights, we have state and county training for myself, which I go to throughout the year with all the other anti-bully coordinators in the county. There's district HIB and SEL trainings for team members ongoing. We have guest speakers at schools and we're also contracted with the Union County Prosecutor's Office on our cyberbullying and internet safety assemblies that we do for all of our schools throughout the year. And for all of our HIB investigations, they're all documented in our Hipster Electronic Reporting System and we're on our eleventh year documenting that in that system. So a little bit more artwork from the Week of Respect, that's School Seven and Twenty-Three, kind of a lot of the activities our kids do either for Week of Respect or our Harmony Power Initiative. This is an example of some of our Harmony Power presentations from last school year. It's a way, awards are given to students that express themselves through their gifts and talents and those that gave back to the community in some positive way. And that's an example of the certificate that students and staff can receive when they go above and beyond in this manner. So that starts off in the Week of Respect and it goes through the whole month of November. And this was last year as well, at one of our schools, School Nine, Sensei Marion there on the bottom with his top hat. He gave his presentation and School Nine did a great day of Harmony Power for the students and staff. And this was another Harmony Power Day last year at School Twenty-One. All the kids were singing songs and it literally brought Sensei Marion to tears. Some more activities and peace walks and coat drives and cultural heritage activities and things we do at the schools. Some more pictures from last school year. So the work ahead of us, we continually analyze our self-assessments by each of our schools and we want to kind of raise those scores a little bit each year, ensuring that there's ongoing parental involvement on our school's safety and climate teams, which is vital to improve our climate and safety within our buildings. We focus on training our school's safety and climate teams in improving school climate. And this year, we had Connie Palmer train all of our schools on effective climate approaches. And she trained all of our safety and climate teams already this year. We want to focus on providing the most effective and appropriate interventions for all of our HIB investigations, whether founded or unfounded, that we're providing the appropriate interventions for all of our students to mitigate these situations. Implementing and proactively addressing SEL HIB Character Ed in-person and virtual programming throughout the year for all our schools. And of course, as we discussed, our Panorama Education SEL Program Initiative was expanded and we've been doing that in all thirty-seven of our schools with our surveys and SEL platform. Elizabeth Public Schools are here to make a difference and that ends the presentation for this evening. Thank you very much. And then I have one more presentation, just the monthly HIB report. So this is pursuant to Board Policy 5131.1 on Harassment, Intimidation and Bullying and our New Jersey Statute 18A37. The law requires that each of our HIB investigations are to be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation. And that report needs to include any services provided, trainings established, discipline imposed or any other actions taken or recommended by the chief school administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on September nineteenth and through October tenth, our school counselors and school-based social workers have completed thirty-two HIB investigations. Of these investigations, fourteen cases were founded for HIB as per NJ law. There were thirteen males, twenty-one females. There were thirteen males, twenty-one females, twenty-one regular education students, and five special education students that were the alleged victims. There were twenty-four males, thirty-one females, forty-seven regular education students, and eight special education students that were the alleged offenders. Of the fourteen cases that were founded for HIB, three cases were founded based on race or national origin, one case was founded based on color, two cases were founded based on gender, one case was founded based on gender identity and expression, one case was founded based on a mental, physical, or sensory disability, and twelve cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for these investigations, there were twelve skill development lessons or trainings, twenty-three counseling sessions, five referrals for outpatient mental health treatment, ten changes of classroom setting, three changes of school placement, one administrative counseling session, ten in-school detentions, twenty-two parent conferences, fourteen out-of-school suspensions, and twelve cases are continuing to be monitored. The HIB statute further requires that at the next regularly scheduled meeting, after board members receive this initial report of the investigations, that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision. Since this is the beginning of the school year, there were no cases reported to the board last month, so there's no need to vote this month on any of the previous cases since they were none reported. And that ends the HIB presentations for this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vassler, we appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to have our board representative, Emily Herrera, give her report, please.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Huglemeyer, and ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to meet with you all today. My name is Emily Herrera, a senior at Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicarelle Academy. It is an honor to be observed and becoming a representative for students in the Elizabeth Public School community. As a Salvadorian American, I'm proud to recognize the events our schools have hosted in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, as well as other events and accomplishments. The J. Christian Bolwich Finance Academy celebrated with various activities ranging from flag-faced painting to pinata making, as well as their student ambassadors reading the pinata book to their autism program. William F. Halsey Academy celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month through studying empowering Hispanic figures, wearing sports jerseys representing their home countries, and performing energetic merengue and zumba classes with vibrant choreography. FJC recognized important Hispanic figures through reading quotes during morning announcements, painting Latin American flags on windows that can be seen from City Hall, and lastly, putting on a showcase standing salsa and mambo, as well as a special performance featuring our autism program. FJC showed their school spirit in hosting a fall pep rally, were members of the football team, and fall sports were recognized, making sure to include our marching band and cheerleading team. FJC has also introduced math, English, social studies, and science honor societies, where our students will soon be inducted into these prestigious programs. FJC Student Government has also introduced a student-run school news production called First Take, where students can inform their peers while creatively expressing themselves. The JVJ SEM Academy hosted a breast cancer awareness walk today, donning pink and raising funds in support of the cause. Upcoming events include Jefferson's Halloween Dance on October eighteenth, FJC's Spooktacular on October twenty-fifth, haunted hallways from both FJC and Jefferson, and lastly, Jefferson's production of Peter Pan from October twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, and Grease the Musical on December fifth through the seventh. That concludes my report on the significant events and activities in our community where our students have actively engaged in. I'm looking forward to working with you all for the remainder of the school year, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to go through the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab One A, the official and private meeting minutes for September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and October second, twenty-twenty-four? Are there any questions regarding the official and private meeting minutes? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, can please add it to the agenda? Are there any questions in regards to the Tab One B, Treasurers and Secretaries Report, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four?
I have a comment if I could.
Yes.
So, every month, we present the results to date of our financial statements, which includes the budgetary expenditures and the budget. And if you recall back in May, we had a budget presentation where we talked about the ARP funding ending this coming September, just ended. And throughout the budget process, there was big concerns that we were going to lose programs because of ARP, and in particular, Ed Management Chairman, Mrs. Pistana, and also Mrs. Marina Ortega, and also Special Ed Chairman, Eliana Chevres, didn't want to lose those programs that were earmarked in the ARP. So, just a reminder, in that budget presentation, we moved over eight-point-four million dollars that were previously funded in ARP, and they're sitting in our budget right now. So, when I'm hearing things about cuts to the budget, and we just watched our after-school program presentation, just a couple of things that showed up on that flyer was the, that we brought over was the Point of Entry After-School Program, K eight to twelve, there was a bilingual Achievement Strategies After-School Program for nine to twelve, there was Social Emotional Learning After-School Program from K to twelve, there was also our Youth Athletics Summer and Saturday Programs that were brought over from ARP to our budget, and also Arts Enrichment were presented on that flyer two days a week. So, I know I'm not seeing, I'm just not seeing the cuts that I was hearing about this evening, and just to summarize, included in that budget for after-school, beginning in twenty-one, twenty-two, we spent, we budgeted seven-point-two million dollars for after-school stipends. Twenty-two, twenty-three, it went up to nine-point-one million dollars in stipends. Twenty-three, twenty-four, it went to ten-point-one million dollars, and in the current budget that is in that financial statement, the stipends are, have increased to thirteen-point-eight million dollars. So, I thought it was just appropriate at this time, since we're looking at the financial statements in this section of the agenda, to highlight some of the things that were moved out of ARP and not cut and actually increased our budget this year.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy, for enlightening us on that, thank you. Are there any questions regarding that?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, do you, I want to just make a comment based on Mr. Kennedy's statement. Everybody know we are a huge community right here, we one of the biggest urban districts, and from the all urban district, Elisa Public School is the school public district who provide more after-school programs. This mean just to let them know the community, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Just want to thank our administration, along with the, you know, Mr. Kennedy and his staff, for working diligently on that. I remember, you know, last year sometime, we talked about the potential of this happening and the cuts taking place, and we said that we would advocate to keep the programs going from the summer programs to the after-school programs, so, and then some new programs have been created since then, so, just want to thank you for hearing us and understanding the needs of our students and putting them first.
I think, I think the directors that are here and some that aren't here had a big part in identifying what we wanted to move forward.
I would agree.
They're to be congratulated too for listening to the board and our committees and, and doing what we think was right for our students.
Thank you, directors.
Anyone else? Okay, sorry. At this time, Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab One B to the agenda, please. Any questions for Tab Two A, Personnel Report?
I have a comment, Madam President.
Yes.
Yes. Page nine of Tab Two A. Just is to be clear with the community, page nine, Tab Two A, is retirements. We have thirteen people right here in this report, and I just want to let you know, everybody's working more than twenty-five years. This mean when you hear from some members of the community, like our teacher are going to newer, perception is different for the reality, okay? And I want to give a special thank you to Dr. William A. Kimick, forty-seven-point-four years. This mean Alexander Kristen Teacher, twenty-six-point-four years. This mean this is detail that you didn't see, but everybody who retired from Elisa Public School have been working for more than twenty-five years. And as a teacher in another school district, when you're working more than twenty years, it's because you really like the place. This mean my dear community, perception is different for the reality. This is the reality inside the agenda tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Tab Two A, Personnel Report? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. At this time, are there any questions for Tab Three, Tuitions Report? Tab Three, Tuitions Report? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. At this time, are there any questions for Tab Four A?
Madam President, I have a comment.
Sure.
Tonight, I want to take this opportunity for congratulate each director, because this is the tab when you submit different kind of consideration for different kind of professional development and different kind activities, from actual conventions, from different, also different kind of professional development like you attend. This mean I want to say thank you, because I know it's not the you do, you investigate. You investigate these great opportunities, it's not easy sometimes to find, and I want to take this opportunity tonight to say thank you to each one of you, because I really pay attention to this tab. And this is how our district design our professional development for teachers, and at the end of the day, our teacher serves our students. Thank you, and I appreciate your hard work and dedication. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. I'm sorry, Rosa, she wants to talk about me, you know. Anyhow, any other questions for Tab Four A? I also want to thank all of our directors as well for all the work that you guys do throughout the year, you know? I always say thank you, I do appreciate all of you guys, ladies and gentlemen. Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. At this time, are there any questions for Tab Four B, Use of Facilities? Any questions for Tab Four B, Use of Facilities? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda. At this time, are there any questions for Tab Four B B, Use of Facilities Considerations? Any questions for Tab Four B B? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Four C, Field Trip Considerations? Are there any questions for Tab Four C, Field Trip Considerations? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Tab Five, Authorizations Report. I would like to add one more item to Tab Five, which is the fifty-fifth anniversary relationship with Elizabeth, authorization to participate. There was a letter that just went out to all the board members, so if you can just include that in Tab Four, excuse me, Tab Five, Authorization to Report. So, at this time, are there any questions for Authorization Report, Tab Five?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a point of emphasis, on Tab Five, on the first page, there's a partnership with Union College of Union County, New Jersey. I remember when I was young and my parents didn't speak any English, it was very hard to do homework, and they didn't understand it, and I know that still lives today in our district. Take advantage of this, let's encourage, this is a grant-funded program where parents can learn English, ESL, they can get a GED, they can, I know we have not a lot of new families that have moved in, this is a great opportunity for them to get the basic education that they need, and to also help our students that can use help with, with homework and things like that, thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments for Tab Five, Authorization Report? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. At this time, are there any questions for Tab Six, Finance and Accounting Report? Are there any questions for Tab Six, Finance and Accounting Report? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, can you please add it to the agenda? Are there any questions for Tab Six A, Transfer of Funds? Are there any questions? Yes.
Yeah, I did have a question, I just wanted to get a status report on the implementation of the, and this may be to the Properties Committee and Mr. Malanis, the implementation of the air conditioners and the chillers, where are we with that, what is the status thus far?
Which tab are you on? Tab Six A?
Six.
Tab Six, so we're going back to Six.
So far, out of the nine buildings that we are currently working on for added ventilation, we have three of them that are completed. They're going through some, like, what they call, you know, they're turning systems on, they're running their, all their controls and everything, so three of them, School Eighteen, School Eighty-seven, and Eighty-seven Annex. The other buildings, we are at some point, we have two buildings that we had to do a shutdown for power, so we're waiting for the utility to allow us to do that, they haven't, they haven't scheduled a day yet. And then, there, the other buildings, one of them is School Five, that is, the asbestos building, that we need to do abeyments in the summer, so it's too late to do those asbestos when the kids are in the building, or anybody else. And then, we're waiting for switch ear equipment, which is the electrical part, to be delivered to the contractor for two of the, for School Nineteen and School Number Four. So, that basically is, you know, that the status right now. We're hoping that by the spring of twenty-twenty-five, we will have every one of those buildings up and running, except for School Five.
So, now, when you say School Four, you're talking about five oh one Union Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tab Six, Finance and Accounting Report? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Are there any questions for Tab Six A, Transfer of Funds? Seeing numbers, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. At this time, are there any questions for Tab Seven, Award of Contract Report?
Yes, Madam President, I have one question.
Yes.
Page four, someone can explain the second contract, contract with the score, pay for the second contract, is the, I didn't understand what kind of contract is, is a college and career guidance management system? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Yes, that's a contract with our score, so that's our college and career platform that we already have available at all of our high schools, this is extending it to our middle schools, so that they could start preparing for college, start doing career interest inventories, start building out their resumes, and discovering more about their future and their potential.
Sounds wonderful, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for Tab Seven, Award of Contracts?
Madam President?
Yes.
Question about Tab Seven. Tab Seven. Page Three. For the contract with TPR Education LLC, which is Princeton Review, and I appreciate Madam Superintendent supplying those answers, but I'd like to have Mr. DiDonato explain that in more detail.
Sure thing. So, that is, as a result of our Title Four Carryover Funds, we were able to partner with the Princeton Review to offer over thirteen thousand hours of one-on-one tutoring for our high school students, and in addition to those one-on-one hours, every high school student has access to their self-paced modules for any academic subject area. I also want to point out that it extends far beyond just the academic course subjects, they also have access to, as Dr. Huglemeyer said, SAT, PSAT prep, as well as college planning tools such as helping them write their college essays, and helping them build their resumes, so that their packets look the best possible for entry into college or career.
And this is the first year that we're offering it for all eleventh and twelfth grade students, correct?
Correct.
So, I'm very happy with that, because that was something that I was very passionate about us doing, because in the past... because in the past, it was only offered to certain FJC students based on a donation, a private donation on the outside. And those SAT and PSAT classes are extremely important. I can remember years and years ago, when my parents invested, because these things cost money. Okay? We also provide PSAT and SAT for all of our students. Let's remember, in many other districts, you have to pay for these expenses. Okay? We provide that for all of our students to make sure that every student has an opportunity to get a higher education. So I'm very happy to see that we've expanded this coursework to all of our students throughout all of our schools, so there's equity amongst all classes, so that they can all advance. Thank you very much, Mr. Oh, I do have another question as well. If you can give me more detail on the tab seven, page, page fourteen, contract with pro athletes?
Certainly, that is.
Is that you or Mr. Bosser?
Talk about it.
Yeah, this is a program that we're going to have at ten of our schools. And it's, the selected schools select ten to twelve students and they're mentored throughout five-month period. And they go over various mentoring skills and activities, such as SEO learning, character education, kind of, you know, getting them ready and on the right path to be successful academically and behaviorally. So it's for ten of our schools, each of those schools select roughly ten to twelve students. And Dee West is the mentor that comes in through that company. Bobby Jackson is a former New York Jet Hall of Famer. And he, and Dee West are providing this mentoring for our students throughout the five-month period.
So again, I'm very also impressed with that program, because that also shows us giving opportunities and making sure that our children are getting the proper role models in the community and other places outside of school, where they can see positive influences that they may not see on a day-to-day basis in our community or in their social environment. So I'm very happy that we're also instituting that program as well. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Madam President. Just to follow up on that specific item, how are the schools and the students selected?
The schools are selected based on different criteria, such as, you know, HIV data. And the students are selected at each individual school. The school, at the school level, select the students they feel are in need of the mentoring program.
Thank you.
Do you have a listing of the schools involved? I don't see that here.
Don't have it with me, but I can get you that.
Can you do that, please? Yeah, next time I'd like to see that also in here before we approve it. Any other questions for tab seven, award of contracts? Seeing numbers Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. At this time, we're at our tab eight, board committee reports. I'm going to ask our chairpersons to please skip the attendance, so just start reading the report. At this time, I'm going to ask for our chairperson from Education Management Committee, Chairperson Stephanie Pastana.
Thank you, Madam President. The Educational Management Committee met on October seventh. The committee reviewed the current staffing needs of the district. The superintendent shared an update regarding the vacancies and presented the supports identified for the schools. Following discussion regarding the state assessment data, the superintendent presented the focus for the year, the school year, defined as literacy across the curriculum and numeracy across the curriculum. This ensures that all content areas have both a focus on literacy and mathematics. In addition, the ninety-day instructional review plan was presented. The plan serves as a focus of the professional learning communities scheduled for all principals and vice principals throughout the month of October. The plan includes an initial assessment, the implementation of instructional strategies, and evaluation and adjustment of the plan based on the data for both literacy and mathematics. The committee discussed the current after-school program offerings for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and the importance of publishing the programs for the school community. Lastly, the committee engaged in a discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan programs that were funded in twenty-four, twenty-five district budget, which Mr. Kennedy already talked about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I have the chairperson of Finance and Accounting Committee give a report. Chairperson Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on October ninth. The committee discussed possible incentives for retaining and attracting substitute bus drivers. A request for the analysis of the multipurpose bus attendants holding the CDL was requested for the next meeting. A current inventory of small passenger buses was requested for further discussion. The committee discussed the shortage of custodians holding a Black Seal boiler license and a request for an analysis by school of the custodians possessing the license was requested for the next meeting. The committee reviewed usage reports with the district sponsoring employee assistance program in connection with the board's continuing initiative of the national self-care awareness. A communication to all employees about the availability of the one-source employee assistance program was recommended. Various properties available for possible expansion needs were discussed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, I have the Chair of the Legal Committee give the report. Board Vice President Chairman Stan Neron.
Thank you, Madam President. The Legal Committee met on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. The committee reviewed the summary of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four residency investigation by grade level. A request was made for a three-year analysis of residency investigations to be presented at the next legal committee meeting. The superintendent also briefed the committee on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four strategic plan indicated relating to the suspension data and the current code of student conduct policy. The alternative to suspension and current protocols were discussed, as well as future professional development sessions scheduled to take place at the end of October. And this is basically reflecting data that we've analyzed and that we feel needs to be addressed. The committee also discussed the uniform policy and current protocols, which I heard mentioned tonight. Those situations have been addressed, and the legal committee has been in the forefront of that to make sure that what we're hearing is not happening. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have the Chairperson of the Negotiations Committee give the report. Board Member Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. The Negotiations Committee met October eleventh. Consultant Dieter Lurch briefed the committee on a preliminary scattergram for the EEA and discussed how it is used to determine the base share contract salaries for negotiations. Further analysis of percent and number of employees and salary dollars at different steps of the guide was requested for the next meeting. A calendar analysis of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year consisting of urban and suburban school districts was presented and discussed with the committee. Labor Day dates two thousand twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth were noted. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll have the Chairperson for the School Properties Committee give the report, Ms. Maria Carvalho.
Thank you, Madam President. The status of the ISA projects were discussed at our meeting. For school eighteen, Edison Maine, Edison Annex are also operational. Schools number four, school number six, twelve, nineteen, and Hamilton will be operational in the spring of twenty twenty-five. The committee reviewed a summary of all capital projects, including Dwyer Academy and Halsey Academy window restoration, security lobby projects at six of our schools, school number five playground restoration currently under construction, the replacement of cabinets at school number one and school number nine, auditorium renovations at Edison CTE Academy, new multipurpose scoreboard at the baseball field, boiler and hot water system upgrades at various schools. The committee requested an office feasibility study for the future office needs in our district. We also asked that pitchers be submitted to the committee at our next meeting for the upgrades of all of our projects. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to take a moment to thank all of the chairpersons that serve so hard. I know in the beginning of the year, I talked about us staying consistent with the meetings throughout the year, and I appreciate you all staying consistent with, um, holding the meetings, holding your, your members accountable for what they do on the committees, and making sure, as Board Vice President mentioned, that we're listening to the community and the things that are talked about here, even in private with the directors, that we do bring it to our subcommittees and we talk about them and try to address them as best as possible. So thank you for your leadership on all the committees, and thank you for the board members who also participate as well. I cannot thank you enough. You make me look good. All right, at this time, tab nine. Are there any questions for tab nine, summaries claim list? Any questions for tab nine, the claims list? Seeing now, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. For tab ten, I just want to recognize a few of the resolutions. I want to recognize the National Parental Involvement Day, which will be held on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. I want to recognize Puerto Rican Heritage Month for the month of November. I would like to recognize Veterans Day on November eleventh, thank you to all those who have served. I want to recognize National French Week, which will be November sixth through November twelfth. I would like to recognize also anti-litter campaign. I also want to take a moment to recognize World Kindness Day, which will be on November thirteenth, Thanksgiving, which will be on November twenty-eighth, American Education Week, which will be November eighteenth through the twenty-second, National Family Week, which will be November twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, Native American Heritage Month, and as well as National Family Literacy Month. And also, we have our Jefferson Arts Academy students who'll be doing Peter Pan sometime next week. I can't see the small writing, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and I don't know the last date, can't see that. They will be performing next week as well. So are there any questions for tab ten through tab, tab ten M? Are there any questions for tab ten through tab ten M?
Just want to, Madam President.
Yes.
From me. I just want to thank the administration and the schools for constantly celebrating the anti-litter campaign. Please take pride in your community and in your city. It's so important that we preserve public spaces, open spaces, and our neighborhoods. You know, and it's something that we got to start really instilling in our young people at an early age so that that carries on. And that's vital to really growing your community and making sure that you have an environmental-friendly community. So just want to say thank you to all that are adhering to this resolution and implementing in your schools. Please create activities to really encourage the young people to, you know, keep our communities clean.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Madam.
Yes.
President. This month, October sixteen, is the day we, it is we recognize Bus Day. And to, it's our Madam Superintendent with leading, leading this district. I want to say thank you, because I know we recognized you on October sixteen, and I know some of the staff member recognize you. I want to say thank you for your hard work and dedication. And October sixteen is when at national level, we recognize our great leaders in our great community. Madam Superintendent, thank you. I wish the best, and God bless us.
Thank you. Are there any questions for tab ten? Mr., can I have a motion to approve the entire agenda in its entirety?
I make a motion to approve the entire agenda?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second to approve the agenda in its entirety. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Carvalho.
Yes.
I think you have a couple of abstentions.
Oh, yes, Mr. Kennedy, I have a few abstentions. Here we go. Yes to everything with an abstention. Tab four B, tab five, the authorization of partnership with the Elizabeth Police Department, and also abstention to tab seven, the contract with the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Chevres.
Yes, with abstention to tab four A, item A.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes, with the abstentions to tab two A, page thirty-four, tab four B, page item three, tab four B, item four, tab four B, item five, um, tab five, and tab seven.
Concavas Pastana.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes, with an abstention from tab five, page one.
And President Bathurst.
Yes.
So the entire agenda has passed.
Thank you. Are there any comments from our board members? I just want to thank all of the directors who are here tonight. Thank you for all the work that you do throughout the year, throughout the month. Thank you to everyone who's here, who has helped us get to where we are today. We are in October. Okay, I don't have to think, do Thanksgiving yet. But I hope that everyone has, I know one more month. I hope that everyone has a blessed day. We have no private session, so we will be closing the meeting right after this. So enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone, and God bless. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, please?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I secondly grab. I think we set a record today, Madam President.
I don't think this has ever happened.
I asked if board members had anything to say. No, said anything.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Carvalho.
Yes, good night.
Chevres. Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes. And thank you for these beautiful Hispanic Heritage shirts. They look fabulous.
Thank you for the beautiful shirts.
As we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you, Delilah.
Concavas Pastana.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Rivera.
Yes, good night.
Bathurst.
Yes, thank you. Good night, and God bless. At seven thirteen.